Unfortunately, we don't have a flag, so we'll bypass the pledge of allegiance. Do I hear motion to adopt the agenda?
I still do.
I hear second. Motion made in second, from the paper.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on down through Carol Anderson, engineer, on the water master plan update.
I'll try to keep speaking up, so if anybody can't hear, let me know. The town was funded for a master plan system update. Funding comes through some of the funding agencies that handle water, wastewater program, and that's where this really made it from. Goes through the system, analyzes the system, puts together some goals, some things we need to address for the next 20-year pipeline. So with that, we'll get started. The town service area covers the limits of the town of Lakeview and urban growth boundary. Not all the areas are covered with the water system. I can never see that.
You don't see that, Governor?
Uh-huh. Up at the north, there we go. This area is served by Lakeview Water. That was part of the water district that was created in the early 1990s. That was constructed with USDA funds and the town took that over in early 2000. The only service outside the urban growth boundary is up here, the northern credit credit facility. We do serve water to that. And we got one to down the water service here, clear ground, except kind of part of the town waiting. And clear down to the experience of the urban growth boundary where the Red Rock site is being worked on right now. The town uses an average of 696,000 gallons a day here around. Data man about 2 million gallons a day. That happens in the summertime. Everybody waters their yard, of course, the school, cemetery, renovation, that sort of thing. The residential use is about 1.90 gallons a day, 1.190 gallons a day. The average per capita use in the United States, 100 gallons per capita per day. Lakeview's average is 1.75, which you'd expect. Yeah, generally larger water, that sort of thing. Little bit of trivia, there was two old reports on the water system. One in 1966 and one in 1973. In 1973, they said we were using 3.65 million gallons of water. I'm not sure if that's true, but there wasn't much people here at that time, three males going, everything happening. And their projected maximum day use in 1994 was going to be 4 million gallons a day versus nothing to that point. I think things have changed across the water, that sort of thing. Water saving devices, those kind of things. Okay, the system's made up of a distribution system, extends the urban growth boundary area, clear out your badge of U.A., clear down the catalysts. We have several wells that provide water to the system. The north well was drilled when the water district was put in place in early 90s. Well was drilled towards the mid-'90s. We have a storage tank out there for that area. We have the two storage tanks that are on the hill right above town, and of course the south end. Currently, we have two wells out past the county shop, six and seven. We have well number nine located on North Second Street by S Street, and also well number eight located on the verden, and well number two located on Third Street. I don't know if somebody is not wanting it.
Do you want me to just?
Well two, on Third Street. Well one is located on Third Street also by railroad tracks, so that would be some work and been used for a long time. Also, well number nine, why don't you do that? On Second Street. If that's a standing problem with that, that is going back online probably in two weeks, Jeff?
Within two weeks.
Within two weeks. So that'll be, that'll be good. The backpack up there. We also have the spring line that comes down below the cane. That supplies water from the spring line generally through May into June, some in July. That main spring is located near Bobby Meadows. We have a pipeline that runs all the way up there. We have current water rights on our springs and our wells. Those are the current certificates. Those won't change. You see in the third column prior date. Some of our water rights on the groundwater diverged quite early, even before the groundwater act was passed. With the others, 55, so that's interesting. Over on the right, that's our diversion rate from cubic feet per second. That's about 450 gallons a minute. You see, when we total add up down there, we have a total of 9.73 cubic feet per second of water rights available to us, which we don't use that much, but that's how much we have available to us with the existing rights we have. Lakeview maintains 43.6 miles of pipeline. The toll system at 24 miles has been placed since 1992, which is something that Lakeview should be proud of. A lot of communities of this size had pipelines around for decades and with no replacement program at all. The town requested color of map. They don't show up very good on here. I apologize, but we key coded them with the age of the pipeline where we can determine some of the older parts, you know, we couldn't really determine the tape. So they're all, they're all pre-1960. Even some of the 60s to 80s, we had a little trouble locating them all, but all in all, I think it's a pretty good color representation. This is the north area with guys who be laying up the top, go more terrace area. So there's a lot of pipeline connects ends up here for the north credit facility. Those are long ways. Middle and down, the two storage tanks up on the hill on the far right. You see most, a lot of our pipelines have been replaced in some areas. Our pair grounds, long highway 140, some new areas down here when the man camp was in place, and blue is some replacement that happened over the years. Some areas that we still need some work along the highway, on the north, north that area, down through town, the downtown core area, that's had a little work over the years, but not much. Still see, we have some deadly lines, like the one on north G, and there's also a few others scattered throughout the areas. You can see where these lines terminate, providing circle type flow. And the south end, they're down to the Red Rock side, we have covered with water. Some of the, again, up on north E, excuse me, south E on this code, and some of the residential areas, we've had some replacement there over the years, but not the total, not the total water on the system. Although, the town's replacement process does have an effect. Jeff will tell you he's almost fixing it, but two or three leaks a week.
Yeah.
In comparison to...
10 years ago, probably averaged 10 leaks a week.
The storage system, the 1 million gallon tank that's right up above, that's the north one, right up above the downtown core, was built in 1973. There were some old concrete tanks and stuff we used for a while, those are gone. We have a 2 million gallon tank down on the south end of the system. This tank floats on the system, provides backup storage. It does not have pump lines connected to the streets here. The 1 million gallon, the 750,000 gallon right above town, we also pump directly to them, and 100,000 gallon tank is out the north end on an area the town took over for the water district. So what do we need for storage? The fire requirement is about 960,000 gallons. That's 2,000 gallons a minute for eight hours. We also need one day supply in case something goes wrong, use the max. Right now, that's 2 million gallons. We need some operational storage, that's the float in the tanks to pump on, envision it as the pump turns on till the pump turns off. So our total storage needs 3.2 million gallons, and we've got quite a bit more than that. So we really don't need to look at storage at this time. Our tanks are in good shape. Replaced the lighting in the south tank about 10 years ago. The tanks are inspected yearly. Our storage needs are pretty well, pretty well taken care of. Okay, quality issues. The EPA and the state of Oregon, which administers the EPA program, have two sets of contaminants. Primary contaminants are things that are bad for you. Lead, copper, arsenic, there's a list of them, and the town tests for those on a regular basis. We don't have any issues with those contaminants, with the exception of the north well. North well was drilled when the arsenic levels were lower. EPA changed those about 10 years ago. So the north well, we haven't been using at this time. You can see the arsenic is a little bit moved ahead. That was quite controversial online, and anyway, that's what the government did. Our biggest problem is the secondary contaminants. The secondary contaminants were put in by the EPA, and they protect how the water looks, how it tastes, and may not be harmful for you. But it shows that, you see those limits, EPA limit at .3, like iron, manganese is .5. When those numbers get higher than that, it can cause some patability problems in the water. Iron can come out, strain corals, manganese builds up in the pipes, breaks off, and you have water with a mess. So those are the things we'll be looking at to try to fix. So each one of the wells are listed itemized there, including the pH over on the left, which our pH is quite high as you might think because we live in a powerful, like, area. So how does it all come together in the system? These two down at the bottom, those samples we took were detailed in the system, one towards the south and one towards the east. You can see that the concentrations aren't quite so high, like iron and manganese as individual wells. So what's, what's been done is chlorine is added. Chlorine is a pretty good precipitant, causes the iron and manganese to precipitate out of the water. We're longing to keep the chlorine residual up. The town has been doing that lately, and there's been more periodic flushes, as you've probably seen, to keep those things worked out. So at that point, that's what we're doing to try to help the water at this point. Iron and manganese are roaming in the, in the groundwater wells. The spring line doesn't have it as it's surface water. What happens in the groundwater wells? Waters are good solids, it's nature solid, tend to dissolve that stuff out of the groundwater, rocks, whatnot. Since we have our wells located in the old lake bed, we have some organic matter. The organic matter tends to use up some of the oxygen in the water. We don't have a lot of oxygen in groundwater anyway, and tends to make those concentrations higher. Now, with the exception of well nine, you see that it's quite a bit lower, well eight, quite a bit lower than some of these wells that were drilled from the 70s and before. That was accomplished by sealing off upper layers of those wells. So those old wells had illegal seal, what was required at the time, about 20 feet. So they're pulling water from every strata up to 20 feet at the surface. Those other wells were sealed about 150 foot down, so they're pulling water out of those upper stratas, probably have some organic matter with the old lake water over 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. So that iron and manganese is not unique to Lakeview, as you want out of other places that have it, and it's rebuilt. So that's one of the major issues to look at, yeah.
So I heard you say that you're precipitating the manganese and the iron would be boring, but the only way that's removed is if it's filtered. Are you filtering that precipitate out?
No, we don't have any way to filter it right now. We talked about some ways we can do that.
Will you have to filter it, building a big filtering system?
The primary reason for the coronation isn't so much to actually take out these chemicals, but is to kill any sort of organic bacteria like E. coli. So that's the primary purpose of it. So it is serving its purpose well.
Right, right. I know that one as well. Thank you.
It was, it was historically, we looked at it about 10 or 12 years ago, too. It was also looked at in the 1970s long report. Basically, the record nations back then were, well, they did have a treatment plan, although I assume that wasn't decided upon at that time. So basically, more chlorine, so we precipitate that out. Only place we have to do that is the contact time in the tanks. So the amount of time the water's in the tank and getting up to the, up to the system is how long the chlorine has to work on. So high chlorine rates would be better with the iron and manganese, but wouldn't be very good to, you know, chlorine's pretty offensive, too. So the town's been trying to keep those as high as it could without creating some additional Only if you're in parts from the onion. If you had a million gallons of water and you had one gallon of something that you dumped in there, that's one part per minute. So you can see that these limits are quite small. Okay, if we're going to fix something and improve something, we have to know if it's going to work for a while. This is just sound practice. Funding agencies require us to do that anyway. Our current population that I have from Lakeview is 2,300. That's updated from 2017 at the Census Bureau's. We have about 779 outside in urban growth boundary that are using the system. How do we project the population? Sometimes we go round and round with this on the funding agency. Lakeview is the top. You can see from 2010 down to 2017, we basically lost population growth. Please ignore 2012, see that 1,064, you saw that right off. I don't know, that should be approved. Ryan, did you want to do that? Anyway, the data from Portland State in rural areas had about .75 decrease per year, so that's what we're going to do. You can see what it comes out of. Okay, so we have to project the water use also, and we did that on the same basis. So we can see down at the end of 20 years, we're using almost 3 million gallons a day max, daily, or peak use. Our average daily demand about 1.3 million, which isn't really too bad. Red Rock has requested some water, which would be an asset to the town to sell, not water, if that decision was made. I included that amount in there in the demand projection. So how many gallons, how many gallons per minute is that? Or how many, feel that actually, it said 504,000 gallons per day. How many gallons, what was that? I think Jeff wanted me to, he wanted what, 50 or something?
350.
350, and that was per what?
Yeah. Their, their original request was for 50, and then they're looking at a wet cooling tower, dry, and that could increase their usage from the original request of 50 to 350.
No, that was per?
Per minute.
Per minute.
Yeah, it was per minute. Per minute, and is that based on per minute, or?
Yeah.
And is that 50 per minute, or is that based on 350?
It's 350.
Darrell?
Yeah?
Why don't we hold our questions and stuff till after he's done with his presentation?
Just want to ask. Let's refine it. So if we decide to create a plant or any other thing on the system, it's going to have to be arranged at 3 million gallons, 3, not NGD, 1 million gallons a day. Okay, goals and recommendations, we need to provide safe, quality water to the Lakeview community. We provide a quality collection of distribution system, provide adequate storage capacity. We really don't need to do anything with storage right now. Our distribution system is really pretty good, other than some pipe replacements. There's been a lot of growth added to our distribution system. We put the, we extended out to the prison. We upgraded to larger lines. Down to Red Rock, of course, that was done a long time ago with the county's industrial park, but we extended that down there, we had extra capacity. When some things are going on, at the old uranium tailing site, some of you may know that's where the solar site is right now, we built some extra capacity in it, so that the exterior of our system can be expanded without hurting the distribution system on the existing part of town. Not going to cut anybody's shore of water, so we have adequate pressures. Our pressures are good, our fire flows are good. There's some of those dead end lines I showed, we probably need to replace and get some, get some fire hydrants in there. Overall, our static pressures are in the low 70s down at the end of the system, and about 58 pounds on the upper end of the system, which the highest part is here at the uptown area. So we will have some recommendations to, to help that a little bit, but really, the distribution system is pretty good. And of course, we need to plant future growth, which we aim for growth protection. So basically, our recommendations, destructive water treatment plant, it's been looked at before, now's probably the time to do it. We're going to have to have some way to treat the, the water to get rid of our iron and manganese problem. It's no fun to add special water. The north well, we haven't been using because of the arsenic. We would have to add an arsenic removal system to that well, that could be done at the well. We don't have any way to get that well to the, to our tanks unless we put in a separate line, pump right in, it can pump right in the system. So that would enable that well to be used collectively with all the others. The system right now isn't controlled. We need a better control system, operated, setting out alarms when there's problems, keep the tanks full, monitor chlorine residuals, just make it a monitored operating system. We'd be able to control pumps better, speed them up, slow them down, keep a steady stream of water into the tank without overflowing the tank, and the maintenance people don't have to get up whenever and turn them on and off. Right now, it's all under management. We need a, we need a monitoring system to take care of that. We added some well repairs. There are some wells that haven't been used, as I noted that well one. We've also got the two, and six and seven are getting pretty old. We can, we need to do some well repairs, clean them out, take a look at them, maybe even drill a new one if we don't want to use those. Anyway, we need some other repairs. The distribution system improvements, I've touched a little bit on that, so both of those will come to some on the top. Okay, a treatment plant is expensive. Get all the water, run it through some, take those things out. Should we look at something else? Well, the town has looked at some other things. We've talked about some other things. Can we locate a well maybe north by the prison? Yeah, maybe we can do that. We locate one up Canadian, could we locate one down south? Yeah, we can do that. Generally, south from our existing well field, south towards Goose Lake, the waters are highly mineralized, that'll take them to get out of the problem we have. To the north, probably better water quality. And to the east, possibly. In 1971, and even in the 1966 report that the town commissioned, we drilled some wells in Camus Prairie. We drilled some wells higher up in the, in the Warreners, trying to get some water. The one in the Warreners didn't really pan out. Camus Prairie, they had some water, they were never active upon at that time. Those are under different ownership now, of course. I did call them a few years ago, just to see if they were interested in doing it. Not at that time. Not at that time. So, but, you know, that is an option. The only thing going for us now is we have adequate number of water supply in our current well field. We already have rights on them. We have more than enough rights. If we wanna transfer one, build a new well, transfer that to a new point of appropriation, do something, we can do that. If we load a new well outside the urban growth boundary quite a ways, we run into some auto rights issues, not 100% that we would, but when you locate it next to other area wells and whatnot, we have a chance to protest water rights issues. I don't know, so, well, some of the council members were here. We went through a lot of water protests on some other wells we tried to locate outside it. And we did get them located on the geothermal wells and whatnot, but tremendous amount of effort and cost, and we lose some of your priority gate. We have 30 priority gates on those wells. So there's, there's some argument for leaving what we already have. We already have the piping in place, and we have to transport it to find a well, you know, three, four, five miles away. We gotta get it. We gotta get the stuff to town. Secondly, we got a lot of backup with the wells in town. So if one's down for some reason, if the pump's down, whatever, we can cover things and we don't have to shut it down. The town's never went on any water type rationing for 30 years type of. That's kind of the argument for a plant. Go to the next one. Down on North Second and F Street, which is kinda north of the new subdivision there on Second Street. What else is there? KBU keeps up the streetways. Anyway, the town has that property. Well 9 is located on it right now. The pump lines from all the wells come into that property. So all the water is already delivered to that property, as well as the old mine. So we can build a treatment plant without any other distribution pipeline. We don't have any land costs, and we have adequate number of quarter feet there to do it. There's several ways to get rid of iron and manganese. There's a lot of ways that other communities are doing it throughout the nation. Tried in true way, there's a product called Green Sand. It's not patented, it's not controlled. It has the ability to ionize and takes the iron and manganese out, also arsenic, also leaders like sulfur dioxide, which we do get sometimes because of the organics in those systems as well. Conceptually, you can think of it like a 30 by 30 filter area. Probably wouldn't be that bad, it would be a serious, serious approach. The green sand would need to be changed, but it lasts quite a while. It lasts several years. So technically, that's one way to do it. It's trite technology. We wouldn't be doing anything that's on the trend. And I try to stay away from things with proprietary for major units of the system. If they have certain filters, you can only buy from certain people that run into problems for the units of the system. The sand is back life. You kind of think of it like a swimming pool filter, same concept, it's just larger, and then it precipitates as you, one of the questions we have, really, where does that stuff go? It goes there in a filter and then it's changed every 15 years, 20 years. Okay, it's expensive to do this stuff. These are preliminary estimates. They're not itemized estimates yet, but they're safe estimates. On our north well, we have them prioritized. On the north well, we can get that first thing again. That's good water, no iron, very low manganese. We can get that back into the system, or we can pump it to the north system, or if it was intended to go as well, we could pump it into the town's system. Treatment plant includes a piping, which isn't much there, electrical service, right where the whole thing. Maybe a pilot program. I don't know. I didn't include the cost for that, whether we need to run that or not. Sometimes you run a pilot program just to make sure we're doing what's gonna work, or you build a new plant, you build a small little one, rip it to the ground. Climate entry system and pump controls, clear priority, if the system works real well. Well repairs, we've got several wells to look at. City Merrill just drilled a new supply well, $750,000. Now, a little deeper than ours are, almost twice, but I get this adequate budget to work on the well. And distribution replacements, we threw in $500,000 mainly for those areas that I mentioned earlier on the distribution system. Originating line iron is 10%. Administrative is a percentage, and a contingency is 10%. Those things are kind of set by the funding agency, so that's where those numbers come from. Anyway, basically nine and a half million dollars. So how do we pay for it? Most small rural communities are financed with water sewer through these two organizations on the left, part of the Better Culture Rural Development, Business Oregon, IFA, called the Infrastructure Finance Authority. Basically, that's the issue with water complaints, is where that comes from. These aren't the only two we'll look at. These are the ones that are major players almost in every project. While the Resources Department has some funding, has some funding available, really not set up for this kind of work, but we will look at it. There's other things, no reason to master part of it, we will look at it. But to put something together that's reasonable, we look at the ones that are gonna be the major player. USDA Rural Development, they financed the hospital. They financed Christmas Valley's water upkeep. We've got some terrible others with the Hillyard well. Business Oregon, done quite a few communities around here. We financed Head Start through Business Oregon. Our sewer improvement, built the legumes 20 years ago, financed ULI, and also the water waste water front, which runs through IFA. Anyway, you can see what their rates are. USDA has a good rate, could be determined out to 50 years. The town is eligible for a 45% grant. Their interest rate is 2%. Business Oregon, their interest rate is 2%. If you're income qualified, you can go down to 1%. City Merrill just got a 1% loan. That was one I was involved with, I know of. Bonanza just got a low rate. I don't know all the particulars of that project. Chillicothe's making major water improvements, and they've got another low rate. So I don't know if Lakeview qualifies for that 1%. That's something we have to go through with the funding agency. Only thing, their terms are 30 years, not 40. There's up to $150,000 in principal to give you. So on the face value, with everything that I have right now, USDA is the, is the best shot. So we take the current long term, up in the other right, 40 years, we take the current interest rate of 3.8. The number of services in town right now, on the system, excuse me, is 1,700. There's some that, on homes that aren't occupied, there's some things going on, and other services, so we're not collecting the money from all 1,700 that we change. So I use 1,600 here. So if you take that over 40 years, that's a payment per year of $417,000. And if you break it down for service per month, $41 for everybody's service per month. Now, if we add the 45% grant, but we probably end up, I think our chances are pretty good there, you can see what that does to the payment, $11.97 per month per service. So our current base rate is $15. I use the rating price for the loan payment on this example, as if we didn't get the grant. Anyway, that's how I set the example. That's a base rate of $36.76 for the minimum amount for the month. Now, the agencies also put together affordability index rates. You see that there, $34.96. We do not put that together, the town doesn't put that together. That's based on Lakeview's population, based on a bunch of other things they do, have a lower moderate income percentage in Lakeview. And I think our low and moderate income figure right now is 35%, somewhere in there. So the agencies will look at that, and afford, near that affordability index, then our chances of grants and other things, lower interest rates are better. I actually thought that affordability that required, but I decided to see it as 34. I think we've got some pretty good options to finance it, and then put things fit. So where we go from here? I've been in communications, so has Roberta, with the funding agencies. We're going to have a one-stop meeting. If all the agencies get together, we'll, we'll set out a strategy of finances that we can, and then come out with some proposals that the town can consider. We've got that scheduled tentatively for October 10. That involves USDA, involves the IFA, and would probably involve the Governor's Solution Team. Quite a few of the agencies are there. I've put together a package we can take and look at, and come out and see. At that time, they'll want a little bit better, harder estimates, which we'll have, those are, those are kind of general what we have here on the screen, but I think that did us some here. So that's long enough.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, on the population projected figure growth, I was under the impression that Lakeview slash Lake County has lost pop, well, maybe not until recently, but for a while there they lost, is losing slowly a little bit of population. How sure can you be that we're gonna be at 3,575 in the year 2037? Boy, I look at what's going on here, and then, and then asking you, do you take that into consideration? How much is that plugged in and figured into proposed new costs? I mean, in other words, are you, are you both factoring that in to the point that we're counting on 3,575 residents to come up with this $36 a month, talking about $36 a month fee?
So, I'm gonna take that. So where those population projections go into our only on the load applications specifically, on our storage needs, and pressure and do we have adequate water? So even if that doesn't happen, the changes we're gonna make don't really have to do with us getting ready for 3,500 people in Lakeview, because our water storage is fine, we don't have any pressure concerns. The things we're doing are making the water consistent and of a high quality for everybody who lives here now. We can add those people or not add those people. It doesn't actually change any of the things that we are putting money into.
Yeah, so you're not using it as a multiplier?
No.
I know.
To come up with this $36 figure?
No, because we used the, we used the $1,600 piece. 1,600 services to come out with a monthly rate, which is in distant services.
3,675. It's not, no. So, so one was the total if they didn't get the 45% grant, and the other one is the alternative, if they get the 45% grant, it's $11 a month.
Basically, 20 years from now, if we had 3,500 people, that $11, that $21 increase would be cut in half.
One more quick question. Quarter Creek Correctional Facility, they use city water?
Yes, they do.
Well, I bet they use a bolt of it.
Jeff can answer that question.
Quite a bit, yeah. They're one of our biggest users.
And how much do they pay, Jeff?
They pay the, the out-of-town rate, which is .0092 cents cubic foot.
I don't know how much they pay for a month. Do you have an idea how much they pay?
What is it? Well, their water bill is usually about?
4,000.
And you go from 4,000 to 5,000 a month.
The funding agencies, the funding agencies won't, won't fund anything unless we plan for the future. They don't wanna dump money into it. And then 10 years later, we say, well, that's just too small, it won't work. So it's not quite as important here. You can look at our population transit here in Bend or in Central Oregon, you know, you spend a lot of time on the population projections.
Yeah. My question is about Red Rock, which is kind of new in this equation. I don't know whether, you know, we sort of want them to be an additional 500,000 gallons per day customer for the revenue, or whether, you know, we want to explore alternatives. But I was wondering whether the recharge of the geothermal waters could be used for part of all of their quench, so that, you know, we, we would be able to sell them the water in a certain way, but it's water that we're actually, you know, committing back down.
I'm not. Or taking that step further, let them drill an oil well and charge them for the use of our water.
Well, whether we serve them or not, or we give them that much, that much water, that's, you know, that's a decision the town will have to make. I don't know, I don't, I don't know their exact operations. They're using it for cooling water.
Right.
So as they, as they gasify their wood waste material, so they'll want, they'll want the coldest water they can get, I would assume, so.
Are they gonna reclaim the water? What? Do they reclaim the water, or they have like a tailing pond and reclaim it, recycle it, or use it?
You know, I, I haven't seen their.
Has that decision been officially made?
No, it hasn't.
I mean, we might want that.
They have not made that decision officially, that they're gonna do a water cooling, they're just looking at it at this point.
I put it in there, so we've cut it.
It seems like the, the source of the problem is pretty well known, different wells. Have you considered options like having two, two kinds of service? Industrial water for industrial, which is a very large fraction of the total use, and then residential, which is better treated or comes from the better wells?
Yeah, we can look at that. We don't really have the distribution system to single that out.
But would that, would that be cheaper, I guess?
I don't know. We'd have to look at it. We, we don't have a lot of, other commercial clients are all thrown through, you know, scattered to camp. Our industrial users are more in places that are just there. So that would be a possibility, to see where we're to.
Yeah, just to match the capacity of the well, and see how that matches up with the industrial use, and then the problem is distributed.
Distributed, yeah.
Well, with Red Rock, they get the full 350 gallons from that, as I requested. Will we be able to support the water usage for the entire town and?
And them?
And the industry? With our current water towers, with the reserves that we listed earlier?
Yeah. Cause I, I had that number.
It was 2.75 million, this is over 3 million, and can we support that? Cause you showed it down there, but it was 3 million that we've been going through Red Rock, and you showed that we have reserves of up to 2.75 million. That doesn't make free.
Actually, that's what he said, though, is that he had to be four in, and then afterwards, he included both of us, and that was still less, a million less. and that was still less, a million less than what the total was. It wasn't adding on to that secondary figure.
The max, you can go back to that, though. Because you're showing, the max data man was two point eight million gallons. The maximum data demand.
And that's worth giving Red Rock three hundred and fifty gallons per day?
Yes.
Okay, that was a clarifier, I thank you.
But, you know, that's the max data man, you know, that, that doesn't happen very often, so.
Can I ask, while we're getting to that, um, the telemetry, is that gonna be installed in phases? Or is that gonna be a one-time project?
Uh, I had it as a one-time project.
Because that means we could be more efficient to install it in phases, like the tanks first, since that way you don't have to send people up to shove, turn them off and shut them off and all that. That could monitor that first, and then when you get ready to do the plant installing, the secondary telemetry's there, and then be able to install your telemetry to one line. As in, three different phases, four different phases would probably be more, it might be more expensive as far as a running it, but it would make everything else more efficient, be able to tie in as you keep going. And that way you're not stuck with everything's up and everything's down. You can fork out the bugs when you've got the tank going, you can fork out the bugs when we've got that going, or we already know those.
Yeah, that'd be a possibility. Control systems are pretty good in that, are you?
Right.
Um, I don't think we don't have that.
Once you put a computer on it, you can have that. Uh, the thing is, we're easily, are not easily, but should be easily able to put the control systems so that we don't have to go up and dig the tanks on any kind of a regular basis when we monitor it. So when the system offered literally a lot of, from the P M D. So, if we started with that, if you make that more refined, if you make that work out, so that you're in limited flow, and we're not, or we're not involved, and didn't work on the other stuff, install while we go, makes sense to me.
We're running out of customers here.
Please, I do it in this building. I wanna change the subject. I come to town.
Five times, really?
And I've seen a lot of buildings on, it's terrible to you. They put in lots of water lines. And I've seen the same water lines replaced two or three times in some areas. And I live on East Street now. And we were turned down for water, Collins, Rod, that they're on East Street, because it says there wasn't enough pressure. That's a dead-end line going up there, and it was put in when the water system was put in originally. None of that's been replaced. And I tore down at least six houses up and at into that street. There used to be a pile of houses up there, back in that, uh, two-story house.
You're talking about East Street?
East Street, so, okay. And I wonder how come none of them lines has ever been replaced? And all these new places that's been put in since I come to town, they're replacing the lines over and over again?
Well, I don't, you know, I only know what we've found in our records. There hasn't, I don't think there's been any replacements on the one you're talking about.
There has never been a replacement of that.
It hasn't leaked, though, if that's the reason.
That's why they wouldn't let me get water down to the, the building.
It's an undersized line.
You said, no, you can't do that because it doesn't have enough water pressure. And there was a meter there. There were several meters up there when I tore down all that house.
Okay, that's this one?
Right behind Safeway.
Right behind Safeway, Collins is right here, yeah, Safeway's here, okay. Well, we'll add that one to the list.
I had a question, if this, you know, if we're able to get the funding that you hope for, the town proves the program and so on, it takes several years to, to build out all of this, right? In the meantime, you know, there are water quality problems in the town. Could we add into the project some way of, uh, you know, helping people who have, you know, bad lines? Or, or, you know, water that's coming in that's especially, uh, you know, troubling? Yeah, I mean, maybe there's a way that you could, or could supplement or improve just in the short term, until our new system and our new filtering works well, or on that, or accelerate that on, on our project, that green, that green sand filter system, and we're all the pipe, we're all the button, to get that going ASAP.
Well, we'll talk about the schedule, what the funding agencies, it doesn't, it, it takes a while.
Sure, oh, sure. How much funding is the, the green sand?
Excuse me?
How much funding of that green sand project deal?
I had it at six million.
So I really?
So, um, my understanding is that you, and I get that it's sewers, I would think that this would be a lesser priority than water quality. But my understanding is that you helped the town in Crescent with a seven point two million dollar project. You got set six point five million in grants and loan forgiveness for them.
Yeah.
Why would we not build to benefit from the same for water?
Crescent, Crescent went to the legislature, and they were able to talk the legislature into a special allotment. So, we got the funding, um, through IFA, um, at the, I, I can't remember the interest rate. I don't remember one thing at a time anymore. I, I think it was one. But we went to the legislature and the legislature gave them a special, just gave them money.
As well?
Yes, it is, yes.
And that's not my way of imagining you have experience with having done the water treatment plants before. So our numbers are really, could be much significantly less if we get the type of loan forgiveness and grants that, that other communities have.
Now Crescent had some issues with septic tanks next to the Little Deshute River, which is, you know. So that, a little bit of that played into it. But they, they did, they, um, we did go to the legislature, the people at Crescent did a good job, and, uh, they talked them into it.
So our numbers could be a lot significantly different then?
Okay, just, just say, I think she had.
Hi.
Hi.
How are ya? Um, so I wanted to comment on a couple of things. Um, the gentleman at front, Bruce, I think his name is? Um, you said something about having a separate amount for the industrial companies? And rather than the in-town people? What about the industrial companies that have employees? Don't they deserve the same rights that we as townspeople have of having fresh water to drink? I mean.
My suggestion was for industrial processes, a cooling tower, for instance, that doesn't have to have the same quality of water that you would want to drink or, or to use in your house. I don't know if it makes sense, I'm just asking a question.
It's not for human, it's, it's the industrial process.
The example of that, we don't go like that. Oh, no, town water.
The well's up over here?
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay, maybe, well, well, there you are. Well, well, well one, located by the river tracks on South End Street, next to the P P Mail building. That's a, I was built in forty, I think, late forties. You know, the water coming out of it looks awful, but I've used it. My name, Bruce is suggesting, if that well is there, let's pipe it straight for the industrial use, and not, not spend money on treating that water.
Okay.
That's something we'd have to look at the cost.
Okay, and then my other question, I guess, would be for the council, was my understanding that you already had an agreement with Red Rock for water? Um, and everybody's talking about a new agreement? Was that because they want more water than they had first proposed?
I don't know anything about the new agreement. It hadn't been brought up to me.
She's talking about the fifty, fifty million, wasn't it?
A thousand per day.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think the town has agreed to them.
To them using any water, because when I went to the meeting out there?
They got offices, they got bathrooms, they got, we, we have to serve them with domestic water.
Right.
We have the lines down there.
Right.
We'll do that. They requested, they made a request for the cooling water to the town. So, the town hasn't made a decision really they'll do that or not.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, a new agreement.
The town council.
Okay.
I, I put it in here because I want it in here.
Right.
Because I don't want, I don't want to end up short sometimes.
Right. I just, I was wondering, I was a little confused, I wanted some clarification.
Yeah. You know, it's an income shot to the town, so that's something the council will have to debate and see if it's worth it.
So you're, you're having this meeting with these financiers on the eighteenth, you said?
Uh, we got it tentatively scheduled for October 10th.
Oh.
But that may change.
Okay. Okay, I know you don't have a timeline for when the project can be completed if we do get that, but do we have a timeline idea of once that meeting happens, how quickly we can get an answer?
Yeah, yeah, we've been through this process, we've been through this process quite some, several times, so. There's environmental reports to do, um, those aren't too complicated because everything's at town.
Right.
Everything's developed, we're not carrying on too close. You know, there's, uh, other issues we have to get, we have to show zoning, you know, all, all land use, land use divided, that sort of thing. Um, we'll have to have harder estimates than we do now. They'll want to see itemized estimates. They'll probably want to look at the whole project. Typically, they want to just do the whole thing for the P M D and get it done. They probably won't pick any of those items, you know, those properties we had. So generally, um, we could probably get it done this winter time. Probably by spring, uh, early summer, things could be in place, depending on how it comes back, in order that everybody's satisfied with the package, if the council agrees to it. But I, I would say as earliest as we could do it would be construction late summer next year.
Do you have a concept?
How long would the projects take? Crescent took three years.
But they've got a little bit extra mess in there, too.
So, if Red Rock's gonna be on town water, does that mean everyone on South Line Street out to Red Rock is gonna be the option to be on town water? Because like, some of those people are on wells.
Right.
And their wells are like, we say, not the best, because minerals out there, so will they have options for that water? Will it be an exit, so it sounds like that?
Well, I think the town's current policy, if you want town water, um, you have to add it to consent to add it. So, um, we'll go back to that distribution.
A lot of those streets don't have water mains on them.
Yeah, so like, where I live, there's no water mains or town water.
Where do you live?
Southwell.
Southwell? You live on this street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we've got water on South Eleven?
Yeah.
And we've got water on Am. Am goes all the way down to Red Rock's side of town. So, um, you know, the town, the town has to extend these lines over, up Cadmus to which Red Rock is paying for. So I guess the answer is, until we can get some things in here, um, we don't have any way to serve it. You know, that, that could be something that could be looked at with this project. I mean, if there's enough people interested, we could take a look at it.
I just know that my water is a lot rounder than town water. And I can box for that. It turns everything round, so I was just curious.
Well, if, if there's enough interest in those areas, we'll take a look at it. Because if we can, if we can utilize the forty-five percent grant, then it's gonna be a lot less expensive to those people that want to look at it.
Could we turn it back to Mr. Stewart's question, that, so, the answers on the, you know, projections for the water usage?
And, you know, that's just a comment, well, we need to, um, I just moved to Lakeview about three months ago, loving it, but I don't even have a very tab. And, you know, we get bottled water in to drink, right? Because it looks kind of gross, even though once I've looked at the science, I wouldn't be fearful of drinking it at all. It's not Flimishiggin water. Um, I spend, what, twenty, twenty-five bucks a month on that. So, once this plant, our first priority, we get, you know, by the spring of next year, if we get that water treatment system in, we do not need to buy drinking water anymore. So that extra twenty dollars, I am not spending any more money a given month, besides buying the bottled water.
You spend eleven, right?
If, if we get the grant.
If we get the grant, you spend eleven, yeah.
So right now, I'm saving money. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, when we're thinking about the cost and these things are scary, just keep that in mind.
I think the majority of people basically get to pay more than twenty-five dollars, and we're all willing to pay more.
Right.
But we want quality.
Absolutely, yeah.
What was your question?
No, uh, Mr. Stewart's question was saying where we stand now, but he was looking at the projections in the twenty-twenty range, and if we had enough to cover the two point five, and what's showing is.
Two point eight?
Are the two point eight? But where we stood beforehand, right now is only six hundred and ninety-six, uh, this year, or, yeah, six ninety-six this year. So he's already adding in all the numbers that, that he were asking for. It's not that number plus the Red Rock, that's the number with Red Rocks. That's how I see it, come on wrong?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, plus, that, this is an average peak, that doesn't happen every day. This is our average for water.
Yeah? Yeah, Red Rock, I, Red Rock's mentioned a lot in this, what if Red Rock just set off, we're gonna wait down? How would that affect, how would that affect the, these figures, projections and stuff?
Uh, it wouldn't affect them much at all. Because, no, it wouldn't allow you to drop that water use a lot.
Yeah, drop the water use a lot.
But, you know, we probably should plan for it anyway. Something could happen in the next twenty-three that we don't know about.
Yeah. I think the other way, I mean, I would say, what if Red Rock comes here, and this is the first time in the world, recently, this kind of, uh, process has been deployed, if it's wildly successful, they may not say five hundred thousand gallons per day, they may say two million gallons per day, can you help us? And, you know, plan for success, something we had to talk about, but my guess is it's.
Three years.
More, it could be that, it could be that, you know, we want to serve them to bring the cost down per user besides them. I, I used to build chemical plants, we're living in, they're very, very water intensive.
I mean, I, I would look at, if this plant comes in and they need more from us, they need more water, right? They need more, they're paying for that.
Right.
So this can only help, you know, you said you live down at South Twelve. So if they've got a pipe going down there, and all of a sudden, we can tie in more easily.
That's right.
You know, and the same thing, if we need, they come back and, you know, they want to make the plant higher, we need even more water. And then we have to go through the town effort of more water rights and getting more wells, they're paying for all of that, but then.
Take Bruce's point, and you say, but not potable water, right? What come up, other water sources?
I mean, you know, if, if, let's say for argument's sake, you know, this, this process is amazing, and they just need more industrial use water, right? Drill, get some water rights on the South Town, the Goose Lake reservoir, you don't need to pipe that into your centralized system for the town, but the town's still charging them that money.
That's more likely.
Well, I think the other thing to, to, for us to remember is that these are projections and this is information for planning. You've got to do it in order to have some sort of picture of where you're going. But I personally, being kind of a planner person, would not want to hold everyone's feet to the fire on all of this because there's just so many different variables that could happen over time. And I personally am really looking forward to, um, the one-stop meeting because I think that's gonna be incredibly helpful. We're gonna have people here who have done this over and over and can make projections in their sleep and, um, understand what we're looking at here. So I think, you know, it was pretty brilliant to come up with that concept and that idea at the time because we're gonna learn a lot more about the financing part of it and even about, you know, the planning part of it. So, you know, I've, you've done a good job launching it, getting, you know, getting the facts and the figures out there so that it can get started. And now it's like, it's a matter of, uh, putting the, um, people together to make it happen. And, you know, three years down the road, sounds like a long way, but it goes by fast. And at least we've got something positive on the other end, so. And at least we've got something positive on the other end, so thanks for getting it going, for rolling it out. We'll see what happens. Kind of exciting.
Thank you, base, for keeping us informed.
Yeah. What remains to be done before the October meeting that happens on that date? Either, you know, expert opinions or consultants that need to be?
No.
You know, this is, this is a...
Uh, we need an approved master plan. So once the town gives it their best and the health department is good, the health department has to put their stamp on it. We've done that many, many times. We have to send a, a letter of intent to the funding agencies by September 19th. So I'm, you know, I'm assuming the council will want to do that. All that is, is a letter of intent for, you know, finding this project or any of it. So that, that's all we have to do right now. We have enough information for the One Stop meetings.
So I'm curious as to why, and I think that a lot of us that are here are people who really want to help facilitate progress towards this water issue that Lakeview's had. Um, and there are many that complain about the water and you see social media posts about, oh my goodness, my water looks like this. And it's really hit and miss, it seems like, a lot. Like, I'm kind of curious where I live, I really have, I mean, like, almost no issue whatsoever. I think it looks pretty darn good most days. And even on the bad days. And I'm curious because I hear that Warner Creek has, you know, major issue, prisoners complaining apparently about their water quality, but, um, and I'm right on the way there. So, you know, I don't, I think a lot of people are very frustrated as to why so hit and miss and why substantially dirtier water all of a sudden versus not. Um, you know, and I, I think it's that something that a lot of people really want to address. I think this is a awesome, fantastic way to let people know the progress that is being made in the plan. I think most people want to know that here and now, why is this happening and, and is there anything we can do to make that a little bit better? I know some of the issues that have been had to get is that we're at max capacity for our water currently, given that, you know, it's been a hot, dry summer, I would imagine.
Yeah, it's been a hot, dry summer and we had, we had one well off, we had one well off life, which we'll go back on line. There's some things that town has done. If you notice those other wells that had the lower concentrations of iron, then we've been trying to use those more when we can. They have to use the others, you know, make up the difference. You know, there's a, there's a lot of, those are pipes in town, as, as Delbert mentioned. Uh, the smaller pipes, uh, with, uh, you know, more services on them will have higher velocity in the pipe. So you have the ability of the water to carry more things when it breaks off into the pipe. Uh, the older pipes have been there longer too, so it's had more, more buildup. It tends to coke on the inside of the pipe. We have samples, we cut out and looked at it based on the age, the older pipes tend to have more. PVC pipes do a little better, but they, there's still cakes on the outside of those. So, um, when Jeff goes to flush it and try to keep everything clean, you know, you've got higher velocities in those areas, so, you know, and the water runs, the water runs, go back to on the distribution system. Well, anyway, like, some of these aren't connected, you know, so we're getting the flow just down that one pipe so we can have some high velocities. Go to the whole thing now. When it's all interconnected like it does, you know, it can get flows from different ways depending on the demand. You know, we, we have a mathematical model of the system, you know, that analyzes these flows and tells us if we have any low pressures, which we don't right now. But that's, uh, that's why, it's kind of a unique thing to areas before. One person up on North G, you know, probably a sample, we've still got it at the office. That's another deadly line up there, see in the upper right. I think after flushing, uh, some other things, you can increase velocity into that.
Um, so, uh, everything there also is absolute, those are engineering controls, right? We can replace the old pipes that have been there for 60 years, we can flush the lines more. But those are all sort of secondary, right? Where's it coming from in the first place? Has anybody ever made, you know, that sand art, you get a bottle at a fair and you put little colored sand in there? You know what I'm talking about? And so, you know, you want a little, little red on this side, just put a little red in. You want green, it covers the whole thing. The geology of where these wells are at is exactly the same. It's a big lake basin where there was a storm from the north, so whatever washed out there sort of gave a ton. And then there was a bigger storm from the south, it's not overlaying everything. That junk has been sitting there, it is nobody's fault, pre-native Americans, pre-animals, this is just the geology. And so unfortunately, we need, with the water quality, we need that water filter because the only way to get that stuff out is to physically take it out, chemically take it out.
There's some isolated areas that are probably worse than others. I know Jeff tries to flush it uniformly, you know, and we try not to have, like, if people want to get water for their water truck, that's losing it into the system so we don't increase the velocities and, you know, it's very much for those.
Warner Creek is the biggest dead end line that we have. You know, they have the lowest velocity, 12-inch pipe, when their flows are low, that water just totally sits there. That's the oldest water in the system, so it has more chance to precipitate iron and manganese into the pipe than when they do start watering, then it moves faster and carries a little bit up and dark water.
Does it come from the highway? Does it run down the highway?
No, it runs out, Duesenberry, Lockin Road and then on Rabbit Hills Road.
The pipes in the system are bigger than the old, otherwise we would manage a fire po, the fire department wouldn't like it. And your insurance, I don't know how that works. Your insurance is, Bob knows about that. So if we maintain those levels of fire protection, then your insurance rating is, is lower.
The electrolysis of the older, smaller diameter pipes, how much does that contribute to the contaminants in the water?
Well, like the steel pipes?
Yeah, the older steel pipes. It's smaller, it's like sand.
You know, I don't really know that. When I've had steel pipes open, I don't notice any different than, than any of the other pipe materials. We have all steel, the newer ones are ductile iron, uh, PVC.
The science behind the chemistry there, I would say it's all originally sourcing from the, from the water in the aquifers that's already there.
So it's the water, to begin with, it's the water?
Yeah.
I guess it's a, you're a misconception or the conception is, is partly where we're getting the water from and partly the old unreplaced pipes.
I mean, it's, it's both, right? It's a multiplying effect. The water that we're getting from is, is the chemistry of the water that we're getting. As you look at the spring water, that's just gray and it's gorgeous, there's nothing in it. So we've got water that's not gray, but then you've got old aging pipes, it builds up, it crusts, and so then the stuff that was, was, the stuff that, little bits that got taken out selectively and, and left to crust, then those will all get washed off at once and so you get incredibly nasty water in isolated events. Does that make sense?
I mean, I've got created too much of that.
I mean, that's one of our, one of our, you know, we didn't itemize the line, uh, the line costs, but with the distribution system, we were recommending that anything, you know, pre-1960, I believe, is just summarily replaced. So up on E Street, nobody's ever, you know, we've never had leaks, we've never had problems, but it's, the building materials that they make today are just better. You know, they, they're, they're less corrosive, they are, uh, they will break down at a much lesser rate, they will take less. Um, and so, yeah, everything 1960, whether or not it's broken, it's going to break or it certainly can't be in, in particularly good chemical shape, we're taking, we're replacing it all ideally.
On water supplies to houses and, and the smaller diameter lines, are you going to still continue to use steel pipe?
Well, the town, we don't use steel pipe on any services at all. Up to the, up to the meter.
Yeah, but I mean, you, to the meter, smaller diameter steel.
Yeah, to the meter, we don't use steel pipe at all. Now, is there some older services that haven't been replaced out there? They're still got steel pipe.
So I was just, so are you, are you going to try to do any, like, scheduling or some kind of electrolysis, uh, protection if you were to use that?
We're using polyethylene, uh, for services right now. That's a pipe that comes in a roll, you know, one inch diameter. So, um, there's still old iron services out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mentioned you want to get rid of all the, all the steel.
Be one of the better ones, dead ends and second pipe.
Yeah. I will not take that bet.
Okay, is there any more questions so we can get this wrapped up? If not, satisfied, Gerald?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
We will adjourn the meeting at, uh, 7:20.